Okay. There are going to be two resolutions to be read on. One is a part-timer in the Public Safety Department. And Matt is going to read on a resolution for the Comac Ambulance Corps, the Green Mill Comac Ambulance Corps. Also, I know that you all folks are interested in this dredging issue. On August 25th, I sent a letter to Congressman Zeldin alerting him to that. And now Russell has drafted a a letter to Amicore of Engineers. I've got copies if you want it. If you say okay, we'll mail it, we'll send it.
I'd like to see a copy of it.
You have that?
No, I don't have it.
I just want to remind the board that we are missing a person on the Board of Ethics. The person has to be a non-registered, I mean, a registered person, but not of the major parties. If anyone knows somebody that's blank or independent, we need to fill that position. Do you want to discuss the site plan?
Good morning, members of the Town Board. Peter Hans from the Planning Department. I have three site plan applications for the Board to consider this morning acting as, well, this afternoon, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review. The first one is called 271 Smithtown Boulevard. This is a vacant building located on Smithtown Boulevard, formerly Sonnenberg Nursery. The proposal is to convert it into a medical office building. Along with the conversion, you'll have landscaping, parking, and it'll become an asset for that area. It's long overdue. It went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and obtained several variances, recommending approval with six conditions. The applicant has agreed to those conditions. The first one's building permits. The second one applies to highway work permits from the County DPW, as Smithtown Boulevard is a county road. The third regards work on an adjacent property to the east. The fourth, handicap parking stalls be provided. The fifth is regarding landscaping. And the sixth, some fencing. Board have any questions? Okay. The next application we have is Smith Haven Mazda. This is for a proposed nearly 3,000-square-foot addition to the existing 13,000-square-foot car dealership, recommending approval with two conditions. First, that they obtain necessary building permits from the Building Department, and the second pertains to landscaping. The applicant has agreed to those conditions, and the seeker was adopted at the September 8th Town Board meeting. Currently, there's Mazda and Mitsubishi in there, and that's, they want expansion for a little bit more room.
It's on the other side of the street. It's on the south side?
This is the building on the northeast corner of Astor in Middle Country. It was, used to be Dodge a long time ago, right next to the funeral home.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like the expansion's out the back, right?
It's actually to the west, towards Astor.
Yeah, it looks this way and this way.
Look, it's this area.
Oh, that little guy there.
It's actually three additions to the building. The last site plan is L3 Narda Microwave. This is basically for some site work. All the site work is indicated in yellow. There was some tree removal involved, so therefore, we went through the site plan review. Recommendation of approval with two conditions. They have no objection. Here we are. All right, thank you.
Peter, while you're here, we have a zone change on this afternoon for Comac.
Yes.
You might want to call the attorney for that applicant. He's notified that there's a condition about a pretty substantial retaining wall that they may not agree with, so you might want to check with them before this afternoon.
Well, what do you want to do if they don't?
Well, I mean, I would just check with them. They indicated to me they're not happy with that condition. They may just leave a WSI, put a 350-square-foot store, which is allowable on that site, which doesn't make any sense. But you might want to just, maybe there's a way that you can speak to him and...
So you're saying the wall was a condition of a wall?
Yeah.
Is that by the car wash?
Yes.
Yes.
So, when, we had talked about this previous?
Right.
And they were not in disagreement at the time?
No, the wall on top of the berm came up later on.
They agreed to the berm. The berm and the plantings to buffer all those residents, but they've indicated now there's a fairly substantial retaining wall like that little...
Okay.
Just to, you know, just, I would recommend maybe give them a call and see. Maybe they've changed their mind, maybe he contacted the attorney, contacted the applicant. I don't know.
Okay, maybe the wall can be made into a fence.
Something like that.
Okay.
I'm the one that pushed the wall, to be honest with you, with the Planning Department, because of all the neighbors behind it.
The neighbors, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the one where they're taking the trees down?
Yes.
On 25, on Jericho?
Next to the car wash.
I see.
I mean, substantial decorative fence. If it can be sound deadening, it's something you can look at, but...
Well, that's what I mean. That's my point. Maybe there's another alternative as opposed to just leaving it, putting a 350-square-foot convenience store there.
Well, then, if you don't have an answer today, then you should take it off the agenda if they're already devoted. Let us know.
Well, you're the board.
This was devised by the Planning Department, and you, you said?
I hadn't input into it because of the residents' complaints.
And originally, they agreed to it?
No, they're not in agreement.
Oh, so they're not agreeing?
They were originally, yes, they were.
But they would like the zone change, so if the Board is saying, "Well, we're only going to approve the zone change if it has these conditions," you know, they're not happy with it, but they'll have to weigh whether or not they want to do it.
Do you know what the objection is?
It's...
It has to do with footings, it's a masonry wall.
It appeared to me, it sounded to me like they weren't aware of how substantial the wall we were looking for. They were in agreement at one point for a fence, soundproof fence on a berm, as many plantings as we wanted. That's what they indicated to me. And now this wall is something that they think is a very expensive project. It's going to, you know, they're going to require a lot from engineering to build it, et cetera.
Mr. Dean Coler actually said to me, he says, "Whatever it takes to make the neighbors happy, I'm fine with it." I told him about the wall, and he was fine with it. He never contacted me saying it was a problem.
Well, he contacted me yesterday, and that's what he said, so...
How tall? What, how big is the wall? Is it like the lonely...
I think it's four or six feet on top of a berm.
It was a four-foot.
No, that's the wall, no. It's kind of like the one around the Hamlet in St. James.
But there's a history here. They went in, did they not, and de-newed the whole buffer zone of trees and whatever?
Right, and they have been replaced. They are proposing substantial more planting if the zone change is approved.
He made that presentation.
Back in March.
What does planning think you need to do to make that buffer and make it comfortable for the residents?
I believe we feel it's adequate, as proposed. We could probably, with a solid wood fence, do the same as the masonry wall that's proposed. We can look into that if you want. We could table it.
These are business people. They know that they have to pay, and they have to secure and enable it.
You could change the condition. You could say, if it gets approved, you could say approved with, you know, up to the Site Plan Review Board to decide what wall goes there. And then it's approved. If they don't want to put the wall that the Site Plan Review Board wants, they don't go forward. If they do, they go forward. At least they have approval or denial on the record.
Right, that is another consideration. If they do obtain Town Board Zone Change approval, they still have the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Site Plan Review ahead of them.
Okay, we can do it that way.
So, does that mean we're still trying for the wall?
I think you talk to the attorney.
Or...
Yeah, I don't know. I'll discuss it.
But what does planning think we need there?
Oh, I believe the buffer substantial as proposed. I mean, it's a 50-foot buffer, a berm, 200 trees. It's pretty substantial.
So you're saying we don't need the fence?
I think it's additional screening for lighting. We could go with a fence. I believe the wall was a little bit more than necessary.
Okay, no objection is to a wall.
Correct. They have no objection to the landscaping and the berm.
I think you just table it until November 3rd, where we all have a chance to look at it and talk to the applicant. No, two weeks is not going to make a difference, or three weeks.
Is that the zone change we made yet?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Excuse me?
There's no change.
What about it?
We have not adopted that yet.
No.
No, it's on today.
We've had a hearing.
You're right.
So you want to table it for today?
Table it till November 3rd.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, that will be fine. I'm just recommending that, so we can get on the same page with the applicant.
Am I understanding that the neighbors are not happy with just the fence that the Planning Department talked about?
The neighbors weren't happy at it because everything got torn down at one time.
But, well, I know, but they said they were going to rebuild it at the March meeting. But would the wall make them more happy, or that's not even going to work?
I don't know. You know, something has to be substantial. If it was a decorative, nice, heavy-duty wooden decorative wall, we'd probably do the same as a concrete wall. It's just, you know, if the Planning Department give us some samples and shows.
Because that lighting, that would be offensive.
Peter, how many trees are there that they've planted?
Oh, so far, there's probably about 135. They're proposing like another 200.
That sounds like a pretty good screen to me.
It's substantial. It's a 50-foot buffer. An office building would be required to have a 10-foot buffer, which is permitted.
But is it, see, I'm missing a point. Isn't it the Planning Department who is expert in this stuff?
Yes.
Tell us what they need, so as Mr. Creighton said, if that's substantial, then why are we doing more?
I think, well, I've been requested to look into it, yes.
Okay, all right. So let's get a definitive answer from the Planning Department. What do you want to do here?
I think we would move forward with the recommendation and just have the wall, instead of a wall, being a solid wood fence of some sort of wood-framed construction. That's the kind of buffer we've done behind King Cullen Plaza, near Wendy's and Hop Dog. I think that would be adequate.
I think, I think you just leave that condition open to the Site Plan Review Board for one way or the other. If I decide on a wall today, or concrete, or wood, leave it up to this Board to decide, you know.
We can do the zone change and then make that decision as a site plan.
The wall will be subject to the Site Plan Review Board.
Can it just be modified so it says, "A wall or fence as determined," or screening? You want it just stricken?
No, I don't want it stricken. I want, you know, the fence or wall shall be decided by the Site Plan Review Board at that time.
Okay.
And that way, we can look at samples of what the wall is, and what's best to protect the neighbors. If they don't like it, then they don't go forward.
I'm just trying to understand if I'm modifying a resolution for the Board.
I would modify it to basically that condition, to say, "The wall/fence material will be determined by the Site Plan Review Board."
Okay.
Not that it has anything to do with the wall, but did I remember an issue about an irrigation system with all those trees that they're planting? Is that something they put in themselves?
Well, it's required by town standards that all landscape areas have an irrigation system.
So they put that in?
They did.
Well, that was, that's part of, that's one of the conditions on this thing also. I asked them to put a deep-rooted irrigation system, and so everything doesn't die again.
Well, that's what happened, right?
Right.
So, okay, so we're tabling this today?
Yeah. We're tabling it or not putting it on at all?
Peter just came up with the answer.
We don't have to table it.
Or put that on and leave it.
You're going to modify that condition, and then we'll vote the zone change.
Yeah, can the Board do that, or does it have to be done on our end?
You just have to modify your conditions, that's all.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I told you about the two resi-- do you know what the Comac Ambulance Corps resolution will be? You guys are familiar with that? Okay. Huh? Want me to explain it?
Well, we can see it if you don't...
Okay.
We'll just see, we'll just take a look at it.
I understand you have people here to...
Yeah, and some of the questions, I'm thinking, might be executive session because it has to do with...
Personnel?
Yeah.
Okay.
And hiring, isn't that executive?
Now, if you're talking in general, it's okay. I'm sure, right, Matthew, if you're talking in general...
Speaking about specific people.
Yeah. So you have Mrs....
Matt, what should be executive? We're going to talk about the shelter and...
Speaking about specific employees?
No, I think it's more in general in relation to the meeting we had last week. And we have the animal shelter director here to tell us a little bit about the needs for the shelter.
Okay, so why don't you have her come up?
If we get specific, we can...
Yeah, she goes over the line, he'll tell us...
Hold it. What?
And I asked Sue to come in, as you did, right, Eddie?
Yes.
And you probably have other questions, but I wanted to make sure that, in light of the fact that the last meeting was a little bit contentious? I wanted the Board to be aware of what we were doing as far as hiring and hiring our behaviorist, and why we haven't done certain things. And Director Hanson can explain to us the needs and what the need would be for a behaviorist, and how many dogs we have vis-à-vis the need. Would that be okay with you?
Okay.
I'm going to make an assumption that the shelter is running fairly well at the moment?
Depends on who you ask.
I'm asking you.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, as far as needs are concerned...
Do you mind if I push that microphone down? Okay.
As far as the needs are concerned, I know there's been a great deal of interest in hiring a full-time behaviorist/trainer. And while we're trying to work out who that candidate might be, I've been in touch with two specific individuals that are involved with training and behavior of dogs, and...
And excuse me, Sue, you're talking for volunteer, or just...
Well, in general, these individuals would be available to work with the staff and/or volunteers as far as handling the dogs and making them more adoptable, making them better trained.
Sue, could you, before we do that, could you just speak to the issue of your feeling about the need of a full-time behaviorist as opposed to possibly part-time? Or the need at all, you know, as, how many dogs we have and what you feel the need is?
Well, with regard to having a full-time trainer/trainer, it's a nice idea. Our shelter's very small as far as our capacity, as far as how many dogs we have. We only have eight dogs currently. What I was hoping to do was to talk to these professionals and get their assessment of what our dogs need, and from there, make a decision and consider their recommendations in terms of having a staff member onboard to work with us in a, you know, in a consistent basis.
Next year's budget has funding in it for part-time behaviorists. Does a part-time behaviorist work for you?
It could. Again, I would reserve judgment until I have an opportunity to speak with these people personally and have them come look at our shelter and evaluate what our dogs are...
These people being who?
Well, we have one individual who's local to Long Island. His name is Michael Gould, and I'll share this with you. This is from his website.
And he's offered to come in as a volunteer for this particular...
Yes, Michael has a great, great deal of experience. He worked with law enforcement, with the K-9 Division.
Somebody told me about, there was a person there with a K-9?
Right.
Police?
In fact, in fact, I was talking to him on the phone, and he said when he first got involved with law enforcement and the K-9 Division, they took quite a few dogs from the Smithtown Animal Shelter as police dogs.
Oh.
He's well-known in the community, well-respected, very experienced, and he actually reached out to me. A number of people had encouraged me to reach out to him, and I was about to, and he actually beat me to it. And he gave me a call, and he said he'd be happy to come and work with us and offer whatever assistance he could, and he would do it on a voluntary basis. He was not interested in getting any compensation for this.
So he will come there and train the animals?
Well, what he would do is, I think what he would do is, he'd come, he'd assess the dogs, and then he'd recommend what he could do for us at that point. And it would probably involve not so much, well, training the dogs is a given, but more importantly, training those who handle the dogs, the staff and the volunteers.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
So you would, Ms. Hanson, you're recommending that you would meet with him, Mr. Gould, make an assessment of the shelter, and then bring back to this Board those recommendations that you and him agree on, and then we can make a decision whether it's part-time, voluntary, or full-time at that point?
Yes.
I think that would be a way to go.
He's got some resume.
There's a great line on the bottom here.
I've heard about him, yes.
... evaluates a temperament of dogs of all ages, size, and breeds for their suitability and sociability as pets, and their ability to interact non-aggressively in pack environments. Michael supervises and studies canine pack behaviors and regulates. That's a great idea.
In addition, there's a second individual, also very well-known and well-respected, nationally, actually. She happens to be employed by the Southampton Animal Shelter. Her name is Amy Sadler, and she runs a very unique program called Playing for Life. And what she does is she works with shelters and the dogs, and assesses them and gets them into playgroups, which does a lot in terms of giving the dogs appropriate socialization and exercise, and reducing stress that a shelter environment typically has. Now, Amy works with the Southampton Animal Shelter, and she also has other staff members that work at the Southampton Animal Shelter. They, they offer their services to the public, and you can come and watch their playgroups in action almost every day of the week. And what I've been doing is I've been sending two members of our staff on a rotation basis to go and visit the shelter when they're having these playgroup activities and observe them, because it's something that we consider introducing at the Smithtown Animal Shelter. They also have trained professionals that will come to your facility and basically do the same type of thing that Michael Gould does. They'll assess the dogs, they can work with the staff, and basically train us how to implement this program. Now, that, that particular service is not free of charge, but from what I understand, from what I've been told, there are other foundations, nonprofit foundations, that will compensate animal shelters that enlist in this program if those shelters have pit bulls. So that's something I'm looking into as well.
How many pit bulls do we have?
I'd say we have about four, maybe five.
Four out of seven, four out of eight.
Yeah, they're mixed, pit bull mixes.
So if we were to move towards Mr. Gould, he would provide some time to your staff to train them in how to, to make the animals behave properly, I guess?
Yeah, make recommendations.
I mean, that's a great idea, and we ought to take care of it.
I think we could just do it.
Absolutely.
Well, he, I spoke to him last Tuesday, and he said that he's in the area quite frequently, and he said that he would stop by soon and come and talk to me a bit more about it.
And his job is to evaluate whether or not we need a part-time behaviorist for the eight dogs?
Well, it's not quite his job, you know, what he does is, and he does this service, by the way, for other shelters. He's worked with Brookhaven, I think he's worked with Huntington. So he's, he's been around to a number of municipal shelters on Long Island, and he offers his services, which is training of the dog handlers and the staff and volunteers.
So we'd be hiring a company? We wouldn't be putting him on payroll?
We're not hiring, we're not hiring. Just come...
He's volunteering.
But, yeah, but here, it looks like he's a company that does this.
He does.
He's not going to do eight dogs for free. Who's going to stick your...
Well, he does, he does charge, he does charge certain companies or individuals. He has, currently, he has, he's retired from law enforcement, but he has a boarding facility/training facility where he has paid customers and clients that bring their dogs there for his services. And he also provides testimony in lawsuits involving dogs and...
Well, why don't we do, why don't we have the town attorney contact him? Because we couldn't just say, "Come in and do some work." We'd have to have him legitimately resolved, by resolution.
Well, could he come in and just to volunteer and to establish whether or not, what our needs are?
Yeah, you were going to talk to him, right, Ms. Hanson, and then come back to this Board, let us know what his recommendations are. And then we could go to that next. If he decides, "Look, I can do this at a fee," then certainly we can do it that way. But I'd like to, I would like to hear what he has to say, what his recommendations to you are referencing to our shelter.
Okay.
Or he may also be able to recommend somebody to us, a behaviorist.
Well, let me just, also, if you wouldn't mind, go back a little bit. Sue has been working on this for quite a while. As you know, I've been working on it myself. And the night of the meeting, when you guys got tricked, because the whole idea of that meeting and the Advisory Board getting angry was that they want under no, nothing else but a full-time behaviorist. They only want one that they have in mind, who's someone they know who might be very good. They didn't want to consider all of the other things that we were trying to do. We talked to Don, we met, we talked to Don, I talked to Alan Schneider, and by the, by the way, there is no civil service title called behaviorist. So we couldn't hire a full-time behaviorist, so it was a moot subject, but they were on a tube. You got tricked. There is no behaviorist, there is no name.
I don't think we got tricked. I think we, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just telling you, there is no, just let me finish.
I understand that.
There was, there's no title.
I don't think we would have ever advocated, "We're just going to go out and hire a full-time..."
No, of course not.
"...animal behaviorist." So all we were doing was, they made, they made inferences that we should look into this, and that's, that's the extent of it. We should look into it and get recommendations from professionals and yourself.
And just to finish my conversation, we should look into it. We have been looking to it. Don, Matt, civil service, Alan Schneider, personnel, how many times did we all meet to look into ways we could do this and came up with no position? Nothing that we could put in the budget because there was no position? Finally, right before Susan came, we had that final meeting where we looked how we could do it. Could we contract, could we not? And since there was no behaviorist title in civil service, we couldn't make up a title. Alan Schneider said, "You can't make up a title because people can't work out of title." You can't say, "Let's bring an education specialist in," because that person couldn't work out of title pursuant to civil service. So we talked about contracting. Again, there was no position to debate. When we, but when we met the last time, we said, "Well, let's wait for Susan to come in, and we will do some legwork, and we will figure out what we need." Hence, that's what we've been doing. Now, now we're in this position where maybe Mr. Gould, you've been looking, and Susan, you have been doing a great job, you have been doing all your homework, and thank you.
So I think we have a plan here, right?
We do have a plan.
Okay.
But we do have a few more things to discuss, but one of them I know is executive session. The other one is, and I don't, is executive session too, opening Sundays?
No, that's no.
Okay, well, but with volunteers. I'm under the impression that that's something that can't be done because of union issues?
Yeah, we should just bring that in.
Executive, right? Yeah. You stay. So I make a motion to go into executive session?
Okay, and then we'll just, you can, you can stay, Don. Okay, second on the motion.
A little favor?
Aye.
Matthew, make sure he's...
Is he ready?
Is he ready, Matthew?
I move to close the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to call, close the general meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.